Okay, folks, I have six o'clock. Uh, would you please stand and join me in the Fugitive Allegiance is certified of the United States of America. It's due to the public for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. How many do we have?
Zero.
Zero. Okay. Uh, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending. Hopefully you learned something tonight. Uh, so this is your first planning board meeting for him.
Yeah.
Oh. So you can take this back to your civics class and say, or you can write a whole thing paper on.
I'm thinking anything here is a learning curve.
But we are the town of Candeagle Planning Board. This is our Valentine's meeting, February fifteenth, happy Valentine's Day to all my loved ones. And uh, for your purposes, the, the folks here are Kim Burkett, our technical support person. Planning Board member Mark Tolbert, Scott.
Neil.
Neil.
Sorry.
So it's kind of been Lakin. Board member Chuck Euler, that's me. Uh, Shawna, you know Shawna.
Yep.
And Lance Brevia represents our town engineers. So we're going to go through the agenda. Did you get a copy of the agenda?
I don't have it on me.
Would you like a copy?
Would you like a copy so you could take home? I'll order it for you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So you take this back to school here. So I had to write a dissertation on.
For Santa Rosa.
So we're gonna follow the agenda as published. Uh, it shouldn't be that long a meeting. Uh, you're here, Mark, for the, uh, for the lot two at Adam Brickyard?
Correct.
Okay. We'll get to that shortly. We won't keep you too long.
Sure.
First, I've got to, uh, tell everyone that if we do have an emergency and the lights go out, we have exits to either side, so be aware of where they're located. So you, should you have to leave the room, that's where to go. I will now ask anyone who'd like to participate in privilege of the floor. Uh, this would be something that, uh, is not on our agenda. Uh, that they'd like to bring you to the planning board this evening. Am I hearing anything? Let's see, Rocco's joining us. Anyone for approval of the floor? Going once, going twice. Okay, moving on. Uh, we have one public hearing tonight. Uh, it was, uh, published and advertised in the Daily Messenger on February seventh. And then we've noticed that that publication, so, uh, that has been recorded as such. Uh, we have no continued public hearings. We have no, uh, we have no continued public hearings. And we'll move now on to continued site plans. And one that's been continuing, seems since the middle of last year, but it's going to continue a little further. And that's for Veneti Associates, uh, representing Marie McNabb. Her sweatback owners of property fifty-two eighty-five Blackpoint Drive. Uh, they are again requesting a continuance of their application, CPN twenty-two oh seventy-seven. Uh, Rocco, what's, uh, what seems to be the hangup? Is it still the septic system?
You're muted, Rocco.
Hit the button.
I did.
There you go.
Hear me now?
Yep.
So, so that and then, um, I, I think that's the biggest thing. Yes, yes.
Okay.
But that's kind of Anthony's job, but I believe that's the biggest holdup.
Okay. But you see progress.
Well, yeah, for sure.
Okay, well, uh, being said, that said, the support okay with, uh, continuing this application, let's make it the March fourteenth meeting. It's okay with all involved.
Yep.
So would someone give me a motion? So moved. Second, please.
A second.
Okay, motion a second. Any further discussion on continuing, uh, this application? All in favor? All right.
Aye.
Okay. That is off to the fourteenth. All right. Next item of the agenda is a new public hearing. Rocco Venetia, representing Terry Dukowski, two thirty-nine Kennedy Street, Candeagle owner property at twenty-three sixty-one Brickyard Road, corner Thomas Road, requesting a single state subdivision approval to subdivide twenty-nine plus acres to create lot one consisting of seven plus acres and lot two consisting of almost twenty-two acres. And this was, uh, reviewed and approved once. And the, uh, the time constraint ran out on it, so it's back again. So I will open the public hearings. Rocco, do you have anything to report regarding this application different from what you had stated back in, uh, last year?
No, it's just a basic subdivision. It was approved. We, my fault. I didn't get you to sign the map in time, so that's why we're back here. But it's identical to what you approved back in the summer.
Okay. Uh, we're members. Do you have any questions of Mr. Venetia?
Is, um, in the MRB letter and then in Chris Jensen's comments, both noted possible variance related to the proposed depth that exceeds two times the width. I had to break that down to make sure I had that correct. Is that, is that, um, accurate and do we have to action that in the meeting?
So I know we, it got brought up in a period of time, it can't. My understanding, talking with Chris, is that that's not going to be an issue for this project.
Okay. That's fine, the meeting works.
We just called it out based on the way we had interpreted the code possibly and flagged it as a question. And then during PRC it got brought up. I think, I don't know if it got brought up specifically to this application, but when it got brought up, we talked about it. It's related to this application. It wasn't an issue.
Okay.
So I think that should potentially go away as we move forward.
Progress.
Progress, thank you.
That was just my comment. Yes, thank you.
Uh, yeah, that was something that Chris had brought up and sort of put a red flag at first, but I guess it wasn't an issue the first time we did it.
Correct.
No, it was just the way it was being read this time and.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Or any other questions?
Um, when we look at the detail line for it, it shows that there's a silver maple ashmaw. I don't see it identified on the plans at all. So an acre of silver maple ashmaw.
It's to the south of here.
Is it on the property or off the property?
Off. It's to the south of here.
The property to.
Yeah, this is mostly.
This is the big section above.
It's a big field and then there's some pines on the south and then below that to southwest or southeast is that, that, that silver maple, but there's no silver maples in there anyways. And we've been through that on our other subdivision at one point.
Okay.
That doesn't affect this property.
All right, I guess, uh, a couple of things I'm looking at here. Uh, the seeker, uh, I guess had an archaeological issue again and did we resolve that the last time around? I guess we did.
Well, being that's a subdivision and there's no site improvements being more, being proposed at this time, what would happen is prior to or as part of the site plan review process, uh, no, no effect finding letter from SHIPPO would be required. So before any construction can happen on a site that has that designation, technically we're obligated to follow through with SHIPPO to get a letter of what we call no effect finding, saying that there's no artifacts or issues on the site. Being that this is a subdivision of land, not technically required at this time.
As far as outside agencies, county planning board was not required or didn't comment on the application. Uh, Chris Jensen, as we said, initially had a question about the need for variance, but that's been resolved. Uh, he had also asked the zoning chart be supplied, put on the plan. I think what he's looking for there, uh, Rocco, is a chart that shows the current zoning requirements, uh, and what's proposed. I, I, I think you might have had that on there.
I have the current, but there is no proposed. I don't, I don't understand the comment because.
Rocco, it's proposed, it'll be, it's one lot now will be two lots. So you have two lots, lot one and lot two, and each will have its own respective area. And as long as those lots comply with the area requirements. And I think you do show the setback lines on each, uh, lot. So, uh, side yard, rear yard, front yard are shown. So I'm just again going by Chris's comment, just making sure we get it on the record. Uh, city fire department had no comment. County Public Works had no comment. County Soreno comment. Uh, there was a question about the width of the gas pipeline. Is that shown on your plan? I think that.
It's fifty feet wide and we can show it on, on the final plan.
Okay. And the latest thing I have, uh, I know we've been kicking around the Auburn Trail, but it looks like now the trails was pretty much, pretty much hard in line. It'll be across the street, but I think you have a, you, you show an easement on there, so that's, let's just leave it on.
And easements for the pipeline, it has to stay there.
No, I mean alloy and brickyard. Yep, we're talking about the Auburn Trail.
Oh, Auburn Trail has never really been presented to me and, and exactly where it's going to be. Um, do I show all proposed easement for the trail?
No, as I said, I think they're pretty well zeroed in on the trail being across the, on the airport side of Brickyard Road. So.
I don't understand your question.
No, I, I was just thinking out loud that I think initially we were saying it could have been on either side back when we first reviewed this, but now I think it's been hard in line on the, um, the west side. So we.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not privy to any of that, so.
Okay, well, you gotta stay up with what's happening in town. Uh, that's our job. That's our job to do that, Rocco, so.
I didn't, I didn't want to make a smart ass comment, so.
Okay. Yeah, you've got another application to go through, so we'll do that.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, that's all I have. Anybody else on the board? Anybody in the audience? Anybody out in virtual land having any questions on this application? If not, we have in front of us a resolution for seeker unlisted. So since we have an unlisted application, excuse me, let me close the hearing first. So the hearing has been closed, so let's, uh, look at the seeker resolution and, uh, does someone want to consider a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the seeker resolution from unlisted action on CPN twenty-two twenty-two dash two one zero five, um, on Thomas Road.
I'll second that. Motion second regarding the seeker. Further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, let's move on to the subdivision. Uh, before the motion's made, Lance, you're sticking by your five conditions of.
Well, you, I think one of the conditions, number five, suggests that at the time, this was previously approved and based on tonight's discussion, are we saying we do not require or want an easement to be put on the, to the town of Candeagle along the front end of the road? That's, so I have, let me rephrase. Number five suggests that the subdivision plans be revised to identify a thirty-foot easement to the town of Candeagle along Brickyard Road extending from the northernmost property line of lot one to the southernmost property line of lot two at the time for the potential Auburn Trail. Being that we know with Auburn Trail, does the town still want and require an easement of some sort to be placed along that road in case, or are we good with, for going that way?
I think we should keep, leave it in case if Rocco's able to do that, just in case, because, I mean, that would be great if that alignment would work, but it might not cross the street.
I don't have a problem granting it at all, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I appreciate that. You didn't before, so we just figured we'd carry it on.
So, so those are the five as written, and then I added the six, which is the existing gas pipeline being shown and an easement on the plans.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
The, the people we're selling this lot to are creating a, a town hall project on the northern lot, so you'll have a chance to, to, to take that easement again, but why don't we give it to you now and get it over with?
Yeah. Okay, uh, so we have the condition. All I need is a motion of six.
I move to accept a single stage subdivision for twenty-two dash one oh five with the six conditions, the last one being the pipeline to be shown and.
Say it. At the second. Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor? All right.
Aye.
Thank you. Hey, which Paris? That one's taking care of it, Rocco.
Thank you.
Uh, three. One, two. Not familiar name, Veneti Associates, Laura Lane, uh, representing Uptown Point LLC. Uh, having to do a property at twenty-three sixty-one Brickyard Road, requesting a single state site plan approval for the construction of a hundred by fifty-six foot range storage. Okay.
This is on the lot, one of the lots that we subdivided back in, uh, you know, the spring, I guess. Um, Patrick, uh, McAlpin is the prospective buyer. He, he's actually, I believe he's at the meeting.
He is?
I think I saw him walk in. So, uh, what we want to do is we want to come in and put in a gated, you know, a gated yard with a fifty-six by a hundred foot storage building. The middle of the building is going to be for his RVs. And then around the outside, we're going to have some, uh, commercial storage space. Um, we. Is it, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Go ahead. You're a role.
For some reason, my screen kind of lost you guys. Ah. I don't know what happened.
We can hear you, so.
We can see you.
I, I, I'll keep talking, but I can't see you anymore. But, but anyways, if I lose you, I'll come back in. But anyways, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you?
So.
Different plan.
So what we want to do is, we, you know, we want to put in this building. And, uh, we've been working with Lance, and I know there's another ladder out there that we're still working on. There was a few more points that we have to address, but for the most part, I think we got it all. And I don't think there's any showstopper on Lance's letter. But that's basically what I want to try to do. We, um, we had, had treated it like it was a, you know, we treated the water, we treated everything, we held back stuff, so, um,
Yep.
Having said that, I'm going to let you guys start a digest and I'm going to try to get back to the meeting, so.
Okay. I, I should say for the board's sake, this is the first time you've probably seen this place.
We've seen it many times, but you probably.
I'm back. I can see you.
Because I had a heck of a time trying to compare the old plan to Aaron's stormwater management report, which showed this plan. And you were referring to, uh, Lance was referring in the resolution to a plan of it revised December thirteenth and that plan was not to be found until today. So we found it at five o'clock.
If I may, I will say that the older plan and the newer plan, for the most part, are substantially the same. Some of the issues that were, some of the things that were different, some of the bigger changes that were provided was the lighting information and the landscaping plan, which we're missing from the original submission. Some of the MRB's original comments were addressed, mostly the stormwater related stuff, which is what Rocco had identified, or which Rocco had just mentioned in our latest county letter, we're still working through, which for the most part, uh, I believe are, we're in a good spot and um, I'm pretty com- comfortable with at least them addressing MRB's remaining comments.
And you're not.
One of MRB groups was a, was a letter from SHIPPO. But SHIPPO came back and said that they had some concerns, so in our packet that we delivered a month or so ago, we hired a environmental guy and he, he went out and, and dug holes. And he gave us the, you know, the, the green light, so just wanted to mention that.
Right, so as prior conditions of a permit from the town, see evolved, he's going to require Chris that that SHIPPO no effect letter
They provided that report to us then.
But we have the report from their professional, Stanton certified, saying that there, there is no artifacts out there and they can proceed. We're just waiting for that SHIPPO's time off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, landscaping was a concern until this plan came in. We had no landscaping, but just go there, scroll, scroll down one more plan. You would can. So I guess the, the lot is currently heavily wooded except maybe along the frontage. So obviously there'll be encroachment in the woods to, to the building and the parking lot, the driveway. And then how long the frontage, uh, you're proposing landscaping.
We tried, we tried to screen it as best we could from the road because we knew from the sides and the rear was already pretty, well, heavily wooded, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Uh, so I guess, uh, plus where do we have native species being used, uh, and?
Red maple was the second one.
Red maples.
That was the second one.
Under red maple.
Evergreen.
Evergreen.
Willow shrub, something.
In spruce.
Papal, does that sound like cells? Papal little.
So your, your, your parking lot, your parking area and most of your driveway will be gravel, but you do have the, uh, impermeable access.
On the, on the entryway, I was in the right of way.
Okay, uh, I think Jim Fletcher had a concern. Was there enough cover on the sixteen inch, or excuse me, thirty-six inch, uh, existing pipe that runs parallel to Brickyard? Did you?
Yeah, there, there's enough, there's enough cover on it. We're going to add to it a little bit, but there's, there's enough cover on it.
Yeah, there were some original concerns of the height, although, uh, the cover over that plate
Right, yeah.
is going to be in there, but based on what we've seen.
Most likely just weren't enough.
Maybe we ask for detail just to cover us. Um, and then that should be made, let's see how it's.
And Lance, you could confirm that this is a standalone stormwater management operation.
Correct, so as part of the original subdivision, because it was commercial and it was multiple lots, at the time of subdivision, it was requested that each of these lots would be required to provide stormwater management, uh, treatment. And possibly, um, at the time of each building lot, uh, full compliance. When this individual lot came to us, it's under the one acre threshold of disturbance. It's under all the original triggers, so working with the applicant, they've provided water quality, more quantity treatment to, to a degree, but not completely meeting the highest level for DC, which it's not required to. What we're asking for in the MRB letter is that any future development on this lot, any improvement on this lot, any, an expansion of any kind, anything, or development of any future lot, one of the remaining vacant lots or part of the original subdivision. It could be ten square feet to, you know, three acres of disturbance. It's going to trigger the need for that project at that time to be fully compliant with the stormwater criteria as regulated by DC. So they are providing stormwater quantity and quality improvements on this project, just not completely meeting the highest level of the DC standards, which again, not technically required to do so.
Mark, do you want to add anything as far as the operation?
Questions, do you want me to stand?
Okay, sure.
Sure. Hi, Patrick McAlpin.
Why don't you come to the, the podium? That way it focuses TV land.
Sure. What? Um, so.
Introduce yourself.
Patrick McAlpin, McAlpin's self-storage over on County Road Ten, did your twenty-six years at, uh, house here. Okay, then. Um, so this is a new project that we're looking at. Um, as Rocco mentioned, uh, it started off as we just needed a place to park our camper. And I, then Marty said that there was no other really barns available around that were in good condition, so I decided to build from scratch. So we approached Rocco in regards to this parcel. Um, and basically in order to help pay for the building, that's why I put the extra ten by twenties on the sides so that we'll ultimately pay for the storage building itself. Um, I noticed that you said something about if I wanted to do a future expansion, there would be an issue. I did buy three acres. I am buying three acres, so I do have that intent down the road at some point to do an expansion, again, further with storage, because that's, that's unfamiliar with. Uh, would that be?
So procedurally would be if you made any improvements on your site or wanted to, you would come to the town, get their approval, fill out an application and submit it and go through this process. What I'm saying is, at that time, typically any project that comes before the town, if you're less than an acre disturbance, you're not technically required to do stormwater. But in this instance, because it's commercial and we have to look at the cumulative effect, being that this is one of five commercial lots in that you're proposing disturb. Rocco, I'm just throwing a number out there, point eight acres of disturbance. Um, we have to say in the consideration that the next improvement may could trigger that when we add it to the original approval. So my thought is, is the request that I have in our letter for Rocco to add to the plans, which was basically identified as part of the subdivision, would be any improvements beyond this and this lot, or whatever the next plan is on any of the future lots, that project's going to be required to do stormwater improvements designed to meet the current state DC, uh, requirements. Okay, so in this case, it might be an expansion of your facility, or it might be another facility. I'm just like to handle that and be fully compliant. On a future site, somebody else may own, it could be the full thing, which they don't have any improvements currently proposed, right? There's no development, so that's trying, that's basically the intent, is that if you were to come in for the town just to do pavement expansions of three parking spaces, that's going to trigger the need for the stormwater improvements to be adhered to on your site.
If, if, if I understand this correctly, if we came back with another building, six months, a year from now, two years from now, three years from now, we could have put it back there, but we'd have to do the stormwater around that building like we did this one.
Right, but, but yes, it would, it would be, we would hold you to the highest level or to the DC standards, which for the most part, you're, you're, you're addressing them now, but you're not.
We're, we're, we're doing that now, so it's, it's not an issue.
I just wanted to know, would there be any way to do that now as opposed to?
You're, you're, you guys most certainly can throw a fully compliant facility and overdesign it now and not have to worry about it's part of future complaints, but that's up to you and the other.
Like a retention pond or something, so.
No, we would, Patrick, Patrick, we would do it the same way we did this, okay? We would use them swales and we would do the same thing we're doing now.
Oh my God, it is, the swales are incredibly costly. Was very surprised with how costly they were. Would it be, uh, to the town's advantage if I put in like a retention pond at one point in the property and didn't have to do all the spells?
Yeah, there's. When that careful how it works. Yes, there's, there's many ways that your project could be fully compliant with the DC standards that we're not holding you to right now. It's this current town. When you come back. When you come back to the town, you're going to have to come through this process anyway. And likely at that time, there will be changes that would be required of you of the current stormwater or improvements associated with the proposed improvements that you'd be making. Option, most certainly can revise the plans that are before the board now. But would likely be forced to come back to the board for approval of that because they're going to want to see what those improvements look like. And I'm going to want to review those improvements if you choose to go forward now, but I don't want to, would it be beneficial? Most sure, you could overdesign it now. And then you won't have to do those type of improvements later on, but you would still be required to come before the board to get an approval. Hope I'm making sense.
Sure.
Like I don't, I don't think you're losing a step by doing it. The benefit would be you'd be designing now to today's standards. As opposed to three years, four years, ten years from now, whatever those standards are at that time.
So it'd make it considered lazier when you come back.
It could. It'd be more costly now for you, but it could be cheaper later on.
But I would be able to get away from all the sway, swales around the building.
Might be able to, I talked to Rocco and his team on how the, what works for your site.
What, what are you driving at, Patrick? You want to change the plan?
Well, I was just thinking that if there was a retention pond, then I could get away from all the swales. I don't know if that's going to be any cheaper. No? I understood there was also a, Rocco, is there a retention pond somewhere else on the property?
No.
There's a pond offsite that someone or goes.
Retention pond, a retention pond just not going to work well, okay? It's just, it's going to have to be too big, too deep, too intrusive. It just, this is, the way we're doing it is the way to handle it. I mean, we looked at that, it just, it didn't make sense to us, you know?
There is, I don't know, because I didn't design your site, to know whether or not any other measures yet, what we've reviewed would work. You may still, even with a pond, be required to do some swelling similar to what you're doing now. In order to get the drainage, to get to that spot for it to, to do it, you know, to utilize.
And, and when you do a pond, you gotta do a for bay and you gotta still do, you know, a pond, a pond doesn't really meet water quality. So you, you, you just end up with a bigger mess in the end. The way to do it is a way for proposing it. In my mind, and if you add on to it later, address that later. You don't need to address that now, you know? Because like, like, like Lance just said, three years from now, the rules are going to change again anyways. And whatever you do, you're not gonna. Uh, you know, you're. It's, it's, that's what you're trying to, which won't work. And, and, and the pond would have to push everything back because the property slopes from the front to the rear, so. You can't, you can't get the water around the building to get to the rear of the property where it would be the optimum place for a pond, so. It, it just doesn't seem to work out. I mean, that's our opinion, but.
Any other questions, Mark?
I think I'm pretty good.
Okay. So we're, this is the plan we're looking at tonight. This is the one that we're considering, so this is the one that we're rolling with. If you want to do anything in the future, you'd have to come back to us anyway, so.
Okay.
All right, anybody else on the board? Just no sewer, which are going to have water.
Yeah, no sewer. We will have water on site, um, gas for the furnace. Uh, but that's pretty much it. Electric. Like the cameras there as well.
No lighting's on the building.
Correct. Uh, yeah, with batteries. Uh, you have a sign you're showing out on the frontage. Uh, is that your street address sign?
Uh, hopefully there's a sign there as of yet, but, uh, it will.
It's part of the, it's part of the plan. It shows on the plan. I was just questioning, uh, what it is and where it's going to be located. I think you. On the older plan, it showed it up just north of, well, the northern part of the property. Kinda, well, maybe it's the best location now that the driveway's where it's, okay. But, uh, Rocco, you have a comment about the sign?
Well, we had to have a place to put it and we thought that was the best place, but he's got to come in for a sign permit anyways, right?
Well, looking at the detail you have on the sheet, it's just the address. It's a, it's a vertical line showing the address. I.
Correct. That was our intention, but if he wants a sign like McAlpin's North Storage or something, he has to come before you anyway, so.
Well, yeah, you go to the CEO. None of the answers. And for a permit. Okay, uh. Landscaping subdivision talked about, you did provide us a statement of operations. Thank you. Of, uh, you have elevations, uh, of what it's going to look like. And I assume you're the ones that were submitted back. In October, they're the same elevations you're considering?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. So we're facing our approval on those elevations. Got no comments back from the fire department or the airport. Uh, nothing from Jim Fletcher this time, or Chris Jensen. So all parties have been accounted for. Anybody else on the board have any? I think I answered that already.
Sorry, one question. Will there be, I think you said in the operations, there'll be a gate that's kind of like a key code or some way to get in and out.
Exactly what kind of like the moves are in.
No, okay.
Um, but, uh, yes, I do plan on having a gate there.
Okay.
Uh, probably a punch code or a swipe card or something like that. My goal is to make it, uh, certainly smaller than my current facility. But, uh. Yeah, I'd like to have it as secure as possible.
Yep.
And that data shown on the. Yes, is that?
Kind of, yeah.
Is it that thing?
Yeah.
You're proposing.
Right there. Yeah.
Okay, correct.
Just double confirming, that's all.
And then any gate that ultimately gets placed there and still allowed to go through the code and so go through fire department to make sure they have accessibility.
Perfect.
So it's just a gate, there's no fence around the property?
Um, I, I. There's a fence.
Oh, is there?
Yeah. Shows on the plan. Um, yeah, I'm pretty sure there's. Okay, this is.
Yeah, I only saw this plan in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would have to be a code as well. Okay, anything else? If not, uh, let's, uh, again, we'll look at, have a unlisted action for Seekers.
I'll do it. Uh, I'll make a motion, uh, for, um, Seeker Resolution Unlisted Action for CPN twenty-two dash zero four seven at two, three, six, one Brickyard Road.
Paul's second.
And again, the reason it's going through a, uh, review for the, uh, archaeological.
So.
It's showing no.
He, I believe it came up on, uh, drill. So this one was manually placed in, filled out. Came up on the electronic.
Okay, so should the answer to that one question be a yes?
We can change it.
All right, so, uh, that being said, without amendment, uh, is everybody else comfortable? How the town has filled out parts two and three? Okay, for favor?
Aye.
Okay, move on to the site one. Looking at, uh, I don't think that was shown five conditions. Do you have anything there?
It looks like one of them shut off.
Oh, okay. This does show a thirty foot easement. Uh, that we sort of, sort of a catchall easement for the benefit of the town, right? It could be used for any of all purposes.
Just a little curiosity, uh, lot number one, was that already approved for the subdivision?
That was withdrawn. Oh, for subdivision?
Lot was approved as part of the subdivision. There's, yeah.
Yeah, it's a four lot, it was a four lot subdivision. Your, your lot being one of them.
Okay, so I, I, I'm buying lot one and two. I just want to make sure that one was, I wanted to keep them separated as separate lots.
Oh, yeah, they're separate. Oh, yeah.
There is a, there is a lot. There's been no development.
No, I don't have the.
You would have to, if you're still the owner.
Have to come back. Well, I will be. Okay.
Well, and you were talking about expansion. I mean, maybe you expand into lot one and then you'll have to go.
So that will be fully, you're going to have to do.
I'd like to find somebody to lease that. Yeah.
Okay.
I bought that early as.
All right, we, we're looking for a motion for lot two, so someone want to give me that motion?
I, I moved to CPN twenty-two oh four seven with the six conditions, the last one being the Shippel letter.
Just to be clear, what it's going to say is that no effect fighting letter from Shippel is going to be required prior to actions of a building.
Okay, motion is second. Thank you, Mark. Uh, we're showing the replaced revised plan as being December thirteenth, which is.
We have that, okay.
Oh, that's.
It's not labeled.
That's the one. Okay, all say this.
Aye.
Aye, host. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Have a nice night.
You too, Rock. Well done.
Yes, all good. You're good.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
But you got what you wanted.
Yeah.
Well, no, I just.
The eyes are.
You sit down. If you don't stand up and stay there, they think, oh, wait a minute, maybe.
I don't know. I don't want to.
We never, we never thought about that. No, no.
Thank you very much for, uh, letting us do this and still letting Fly Guy come in.
So what do you think? Pretty good people?
Pretty exciting.
See, the name is pretty accurate, isn't it?
What are swales?
Swales.
Swales.
So you see, see the dark impression around the building itself along the lot line? That's a recession in the earth, so they're going to excavate that and they fill it in with material that'll drain water better. Soil and stone, sand, any kind of a little.
Okay. Uh, next is, uh, CPN twenty-three oh oh seven. Uh, again, it's Venetia Associates, uh, it's a property at. Fifty-one thirty-one Silvernail Drive, folks.
I appreciate that, folks.
Hi, guys. Good to see you. Hi, honey.
Everyone.
Uh, again, this is a redo of one that was done, I guess, before Mark and Scott were here.
I think you were in all.
He might have been in order.
I don't think you were, yeah, you were, I think you were two weeks ago.
It's weird. I don't feel like it was that long ago.
It wasn't. It was.
It was, I mean, we're.
You may have seen the many years.
I know in twenty twenty for the.
It's ringing some bells, but.
The guy tracked the trees down and then.
Oh, there it is. There it is.
Yeah.
Okay, same though, okay. Well, you're not going to get.
Dang it, okay.
Uh, the applicant has re- requested a continuation. So why don't we, once again, it's okay with the board, continue to be, uh, fourteenth of March.
Yes, yep. I don't, I don't think there's much there. Yes.
Yes.
There's the question about that property. So when I drove, there's the, the road that continues past that property down. Were there plans at one point to make that until more of a development or?
I don't remember the original approval. I do remember the amended approval to replace and put all these trees there. So I don't recall what intent was with that driveway and access and all that. That's something I'm going to look at.
There's a whole history of silver neighbors, the why that.
Yes.
I'll turn it, I mean, I turned around and so I passed the property, little turnaround, the road continues down the slope.
It splits, uh, driveway goes one way and then this property goes to the right. And it goes down the hill.
Where, where's it go down, once you go down the hill? That was my question.
House.
Oh, there is a house.
There's a house. Well, there's, there's a house.
So that road is actually used?
On the left side. And this guy wants to go on the right side.
Yeah, the one that was existing.
Okay. Uh, it's, uh.
Yeah.
It's challenge.
Yeah.
I'm amazed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Person. I mean, talk about next time. We'll talk about on the fourteenth of March if it's okay with everyone. Why don't we, uh, I'll make a motion to extend the review of this until the, uh. Fifteenth of March. Okay, for discussion? If not, all favor? Okay. Thank you. This is plan's review. Uh, we have one request for extension. Scott Carter, uh, from Sayin Charlotte Chosen Spot LLC, property fifty-two seventy-two Mentis. Uh, requesting, uh, they're not requesting the balance. They're requesting.
Oh, that was just the original.
Requesting a, uh, instruct a single family home on the vacant property. And they're doing their SWIP and trying to meet the conditions according to Scott's request for the extension. So he's requesting the first ninety day extension. You have that resolution in front of you?
Next extension date is April twenty-second. So it inspired at the end of January. Okay. I was manning.
When I did the one eighty from the original approval, I thought it brought me to January twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. He did request the extension and we're taking action.
Okay.
So we have forty seconds to debate. Okay. So, uh, through the discussion, not. Uh, did we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue first ninety day, twenty-two eighteen.
Second please. Motion second, all favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I get an approval for John's last seven minutes back on January twenty-fourth?
Oh, who wants the honors?
I will make a motion to approve John's wonderful and final minutes of January twenty-fourth.
Okay.
We're all good.
Do you have a second?
I'll, I'll say it second.
Mr.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a feeling he was probably that person that came on today, didn't nobody know who was. He didn't want to know full names. He was just making sure.
It's a Tim, Tim, Tim.
Tim, whatever.
Tiny Tim.
It's, it's his, um. Uh, yeah, his pen name, yeah. He, he doesn't just write his story.
Sure, sure.
Fiction. It's like romance novels.
Okay.
That'd be great. That'd be fantastic. Sorry.
The Lacy's, the Lacy's want some money back from us, uh, for their original subdivision control. Five hundred seventeen dollars. Uh, you want to see it, Mark?
I would love to see it.
It's the package here.
There was one that was missed, um, when I received it with a hundred of the other ones, so.
It was clipped to when we did all of those.
Now, Lacy's are currently in on a application to.
They are, but.
It's going through ZBA and I guess it's gift us at some point maybe.
I hope so. It's taking a while.
Uh, we can hold up till you have a chance.
Yeah, yeah.
All of the signatures appear to be in place.
Right.
Except for one.
Two. I just.
There's a officer.
Oh, James has said. While Mark's looking at that, uh, I sent out the contact info sheet, uh, with all folks' names, addresses, contact information. And I think Scott, give me your new address. And this is okay. Everything was good with you, Mark? Okay. And I assume Bob was okay, so I will wait for our new secretary. Put her, her contact information on and then we'll send out to everybody so you have a copy.
Do we have?
We do. Uh, Twinkle, she'll be starting. She was a speaker number.
So that would be the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
She's planning to start it zoning law next week, so.
Hey, Mark, if you're comfortable, you'll make a motion regarding the uh, review.
Ooh, I am making a motion.
I'll second. Okay, motion, second, we hear the, this is a money back, some money back. All money, five seventeen is the total, right?
Five seventeen.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
No further discussion, all favor?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. Contact sheets, referrals to town board, uh, they did, uh. You said yesterday, they did use the moratorium on the solar.
Correct.
Oh.
Okay.
When.
For how long?
Yeah.
Six months.
Six.
Okay.
Those sketch plans that were out there. They go away for a while, you know, just was a small application.
Redline version of our changes is for the board.
Is that redline version on the website or you know, just a?
The redline version.
No, I have, I have, I have. The proposed local.
So it might be in the agenda.
It was, this is the agenda for me.
Yeah.
Let's see, I'm single agenda.
It'll be, uh, the place.
I'm just comparing it to other codes that we've seen go for on these accounting, just see if there's any additions on that.
And you got the, the plans.
We have date plans, there's another, I heard, um, I went to planning, county planning board last week.
So that was the reason they didn't act on it, because it hadn't been tented?
Yes. The big plan commented on it and it's just a.
As a uh, concerned citizen.
Concerned citizen, right? Yeah.
Almost, it almost is, it's kind of looks like or red light council to the sun. Or, cause that's how I read it.
Hmm.
Yeah. It was.
It's a good point.
It was helpful, yeah, it had some good points.
Yeah. He's actually, uh, he took a new job. If you don't know.
The money.
Yeah, and our next part.
Oh, he doesn't work for a consultant.
No. And so what is that?
We're talking about Dave Flent, uh, he's.
He was appointed by the governor.
Yeah, he's the uh. President of the Federation.
President of the Federation.
Yeah, the New York, uh, Planning Federation.
Was the burglar and left burglar for this new.
It's Scott, you get the medium if you want to, if you're going to Saratoga.
He is.
That's uh, that's his shebang. So uh. Okay, so someone's moving along. Uh, speaking of some of those projects, uh. Lance got the design manual out to uh. Doug and Powers to be, and uh, so that has been revised, this is the site criteria. So that's uh. Maybe, I, I assume at the most, just an approval by the town board, doesn't have our local laws. Adjustment because it uh. It was set up that it could be amended rather easily. Without having to go through those.
Yeah, I believe you just, you know, they'll. If it's a town board approval, likely still requires public hearing, that process, but I don't believe. You need to do, you know, local uh, type of approval. I think they get just less than a day.
Hmm.
Because it's always existing document or that.
Yeah, I wonder if uh, would have wanted to have it deferred to anyone.
Yeah. Lot two. So David probably refers back to you guys, yeah.
That's what I'm thinking of, you.
Well, I think for other members. Yes, it's interesting reading.
It's really great.
What the, you know, what the temperature of the blacktop has to be to put down.
How many layers of stone, you mean?
It's done with thickness of the radiation.
One of the big ones that we're working through now is the dedication requirements, you know, what is required to be dedicated when. The prior missions of CFOs, what we're looking at, because we're running some potential issues with other projects, just the timing. Uh, and, and so we're trying to clean that up, I think that, to me, that's a big component of this federation or.
And Jim had, uh, as a highway superintendent, had some spec changes he wanted to make and they were made. I was looking at more from a complete street standpoint, to make sure there's nothing in there that inhibits the use of the streets, so. Uh, it's certainly mentioned many times in the document. And uh, speaking of streets, uh, there's a meeting of the sidewalk team tomorrow. Am I correct?
I believe I, yeah, I don't, is that the afternoon?
Uh, it's noon.
Noon or one?
It is noon.
Is it noon?
Noon, noon, noon. So it'll be interesting to see where we are with that. And. Twelve o'clock, I'll enter room. In here, I think, yeah.
Twelve o'clock.
Okay, as far as training, uh, we've got the. We've got the notices about the bootcamps, the Federation Conference, Saratoga. You know of anybody from the ZBA's going?
I don't know of anyone that wants to go.
Usually the town has two slots, three each.
I will ask them, if not, I could, we could open up.
Well, that or somebody else in favor.
Okay, so.
August or April sixteen?
Seventeen, fourteen?
The Sunday after Easter to, whatever that is.
Okay.
Six days, then you, then you lose. The programs. And you get a lot of hours.
Yeah, all hours, all hours.
Uh, take, take a look at the bootcamps, uh, the one that MRV uh, does with uh.
Hancock.
Hancock?
Yeah.
Set it on, the first one?
I watched all of those last year.
Almost, yeah.
I did, and I'm just curious if. They're different sessions. I, I'm guessing not.
Different in terms of subjects?
I'm guessing it's the same, the exact same slides. So I reached out to him to find out, I haven't heard back. But I, I did sign up the next one, just to see.
So I think they list the topics.
Yeah.
It's, it's every, it's every one.
Couple of them.
Uh, the topics are basically this.
Are they?
It's a question of whether or not it's.
Yeah, is there new. Some of the topics did look regurgitated, I don't know who comes up with the, the topics, but. Some of them definitely look very similar, I do not know if the, if the slides themselves, I'm assuming there'll be new information.
Yeah, I'm sure the interaction will be this.
But I don't.
Very different.
But yeah, the top, there was some similar topics that I saw.
Sorry, and the, the one Marty did. It's different because the law had changed regarding remote meetings and, you know, it's much stricter now, that, that's the reason Bob. Couldn't sit in remotely, because you can't be a participating member if you're away because of vacation, anything other than sickness. Childcare.
Childcare, yeah, it's really limited.
So, I guess I'm here, I'm gonna be away the twenty, whatever, April. So I was gonna zoom in from the hotel. But that's not.
For.
Or what?
For vacation or work or no?
Yeah, it won't.
Really, so they.
Yeah, they changed that.
What is the thinking there?
Well, because that's how it used to be, I mean, I think they're.
If you wanna participate in a meeting, it doesn't matter if you're on vacation or working.
You can listen, I mean, service.
You can't, you just can't vote.
Yeah. Just can't vote.
And if you vote.
Three thousand.
You've gotta inform the town where you are.
It'll be, it was just back to the old.
Where you are.
Where you are, yeah, address, open up your house.
So it's illness, childcare. What else? The reasons for you being able to work.
Something work related.
It's something that's, it requires you to be away as opposed to this choosing to be.
So it's housework. Like you're choosing.
I mean, so my work is requiring you to be away on the twenty-fifth and I zoom in and.
On the new trend, that's legit.
You're hard to work remotely.
I mean.
But again, yeah.
I'm gonna be working, I'll have my laptop from work, I mean, so.
There you go.
Yeah.
It makes a lot of sense.
But you have to let Sean know where you are. And you're happy to be accessible if anybody wants to sit in.
Exactly.
You have to pay for at least your.
Tell me.
Actually, you know, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in Buffalo at the airport because my flight's got changed for the next day, so I'm going tonight before it will be Buffalo.
And what I'm saying is.
Yeah, that sounds like a logic.
I don't know, but mine, I was gonna zoom in.
Where does Buffalo go direct down South again?
Well, which gets.
We don't have an alternate.
Which gets us into maybe a need for home invasion.
I, I was gonna say for the end that I will not be able to join you at the next meeting at the end of February, cause I'll be landing on a work flight. So I don't think I can zoom in while in a taxi and, you know, contribute any sort of value to you all, but.
Well.
That's scary.
You could try.
Just saying that out loud, but.
So your excuse for the twenty-eighth?
May I?
Yeah, this my copious minutes.
May I request uh, executioner?
Okay, no Amanda?
Yeah, will Bob be back?
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's in the.
Yeah, you, you got it.
He's always.
Yes.
And which means, uh, Scott, you said you couldn't.
April twenty.
Oh, okay, just remind us.
Yeah. She's sorry.
Okay.
Can we make that apply to the, the people that are presenting that if they're IT challenged, can we force them to come in here and be with us? So that we don't have to waste twenty minutes of my, your, he's.
It's a good question, because.
That was better, you did better tonight.
You did.
I mean, if we have to be here to vote, should they be here to present?
It's quite a scale. Better from here.
We don't have to. Wow, Zoom.
There's a lot of communities that do.
Well, for, in the old days when Karen, remember Karen used to take the winner off? And uh, she would. It'd be over the phone lines, it wasn't Zoom, it was.
It was so, oh.
It was, you know, Wed, Wed, Dime or something like that, she'd call in. But she was the only one, everybody else was here, yeah, all the applicants.
I mean, it seems like so long ago, you're out of time, there's a lot of people trying to do this, you can't think what, there's already doing.
Wow, we like something more.
But I.
I was one last.
At least the committees that I'm in, there, there's some committees that don't have any.
Some committees that don't have zoning.
They can't, they don't have internet, they're like, ah, they're lost.
The China Potter needs, yeah, he doesn't have it.
Okay.
It's bad, it's a place.
In two weeks, folks. Sub or manager? Uh, we have the.
Yeah.
Collier, Sutter and Scott Hall, Rossner, they're.
Holster.
They're doing, they're gonna reupholster French.
The government's Lacy's. Oh, Nelson.
Yeah, you got Lacy and.
And Artis and me.
Auburnman. And the ZBA.
Pending.
And Nelson, he got it, sorry.
He got his driveway setback, correct?
So it's all on us.
That's a tough site. That's a really tough site.
Okay, so that's uh, the twenty-eighth and the fourteenth, we extended a couple tonight. And I didn't get to make some sausage.
Maybe, he, that's.
I don't know.
I'm not sure he's.
They were pretty hard to track PRC and then all of a sudden it just keep rushing, rushing, rushing back.
Yeah.
It's two, two additions, right?
Two additions.
Yeah, true.
Yep, they, well, they continued saga of Witek and then uh. Uh, so.
Someone else?
Okay, Sands.
Sands, uh, they were gonna come back to, yeah, Sands.
They're gonna do a look, yeah.
They want another look, so that's gonna be pushed to March. Turek, you haven't seen it.
Turek was gonna consolidate.
Needs to come back, was gonna consolidate, we haven't seen that, I'm glad, and we'll come back to see if it didn't.
So I did have a conversation with the design engineer for that one today. I believe at PRC, we had, I could be wrong, a couple options, I don't know, but.
Yep.
Options in terms of individual site plans for each lot or potentially an overall approval type process for the four individual site plans that they had. To make it, I think, more coherent in one application and then come back to you guys as final for each lot. The time, the reason is there's improvements being made for one lot and another lot, i.e. a driveway.
I.e. they never spoke to the property owner about it, that was one.
That's what it sounds like, so. The engineer called me today to kind of talk through what he was hoping to be able to do in terms of doing some of the overall. And I told him to contact you, I said, thank you for letting me know, but contact it.
Did he have, has already had way with the neighbor?
It sounds like the headway know, and that they're still figuring out the most appropriate way to combine them, which. I think an overall review process makes sense for four site, you know, basically an overall site plan for four individual lot improvements. Seeker for the whole thing, you look at drainage for the whole thing. And then they come back to you as individual site plans for that lot as final, whenever they're ready, cause some of the lots, based on what we have heard. And it's something, they may be five years down the line before they're really doing it. I think some of them might be very.
I don't think we're very good talking about, they, they had seen.
They had never seen it.
Yeah, it's PRC that did.
Yeah.
Hit it off there, uh, Zagara, they're gonna be ZBA next week?
Possibly.
Possible, okay. Would that mean, that could be on the twenty-eighth for us, or?
It could be on the twenty-eighth, um, I, they haven't made, they, I don't foresee that happening.
So it's Sandy Beach?
Yeah, it's Sandy, uh, it was not Lacy. Sandy Beach is Lacy, or, yeah, Zagara is on the others, no, that's all on them.
Anyway.
Anyways, they're, they're very similar, um.
And Sutter is.
Sutter is hanging out there.
Hanging there and Uptown Landing, have you gotten together with them?
Oh, yeah, many times, yeah, but it.
They're not ready yet. Okay.
Where did you see that?
This would be the initial phase of Uptown Landing. Uh, site plan and four base review. And Sunset Ridge may be in with its. Final for base one somewhere.
Phase one, ten months.
So obviously still working through the conditions of preliminary, but.
We talked about it, it's here, she. Okay, anybody else have anything, tonight? Drop your clock.
Make a motion to adjourn at seven oh seven.
Alright.
Woo-hoo.
Hi.
I'm second, Mark, Mark got it.
Everyone's, everyone's in favor, no one's.
No one is.